Good evening and welcome to this meeting of the Troutdale Planning Commission for Wednesday, May 8, 2024. We could have roll call, please.
Commissioner Andrews.
Is on his way.
Commissioner Minkoff is excused. Commissioner Lemey?
Here.
Vice Chair Prickett?
Here.
Commissioner Wilcox?
I've not heard from him.
Oh, there he is.
There he is.
Yep, I'll wait for him to join me. Commissioner Wilcox?
I think he may be on mute. It's okay, we know he's here.
Yep, we see him. Chair Stephenson?
Here.
Commissioner Allen?
Here.
Okay, this time I would like to ask everyone to stand for the Pledge Allegiance and Commissioner Allen will be leading us this evening.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, individual or liberty and justice for all.
Is there anyone wishing to speak to the Planning Commission this evening on a non-agenda item? I've not seen any. Okay, and we are going to delay the approval of minutes till the next meeting and so we're right into the discussion on Troutdale Development Code use tables, Chapter 3 zoning districts. Mister.
Yes, so this is a topic that has been working on over the past several months. Actually, I think we first discussed it in December of 2023. That's when we started with the definitions. And then the commission wanted to move forward and look at the use tables and see if there was any edits that would like to be made. So at the last meeting we discussed this, or the last meeting we discussed the use tables was in January. The request was for commissioners to go back, review the use tables within the the development code and come back with any sort of, any potential amendments or changes that you would all like to see. So I think we'll start off with Tanny.
We'll start off with me?
Yeah. This was something that you wanted to discuss, so I was thinking start with you first and then we'll go from there.
Okay. I thought Paul was going first.
I believe, um, Richard, I think Paul first asked about it.
Um, he was asking about it as well, but I think I was the one that had it tabled. In February, right?
I'll have to go back and check my notes.
But that's okay. All right, so you want me to start here?
Uh, sure, yeah, just start.
The first one was site and design review. You wanted definitions for that? Am I reading that right?
Yeah, that was, uh, that as part of the, you wanted to, we wanted to look at the definition of that and see how we could potentially change it or add a definition. And when I sent this out to everyone, the definition spreadsheet back in January to review and provide feedback. Haven't received any feedback except for Commissioner Wilcox. So that's, then that's when I re-presented this in February. That's why there's a couple highlighted. That's where the areas I don't remember where we're standing. So that's where we're currently sitting. I'm pulling up my code. I'm just gonna double check here. Site and Design Review Committee. Currently, the code states Site and Design Review Committee, definition being a committee chaired by the director to review applicable development proposals for compliance to provisions of this code.
Okay. I went a little deeper. I'll just spitball this. A committee responsible for reviewing and commenting on applications which may be directed to it through the development review process. If no site and design committee is chartered, the planning commission shall serve as the site and design committee. And the site and design committee would be chaired by the director. Or his designated, or designated.
Can I ask for a clarification? Because I wasn't here through this early process. So that would be a new definition to the definition, uh, chapter 1.020?
Be changing the definition.
Okay, perfect. Thanks.
What do you think?
I'm pulling up, I'm sorry, I'm pulling up a bunch of stuff here.
Okay.
To the spreadsheet so I can try to take notes while we're discussing these as well.
And I'm taking notes too, so it's perfect.
We talked about that that really didn't have an adequate definition for it.
Uh, I think what we had discussed was it was pretty vague.
Yeah.
And what is a design review committee? Is that, I mean, it talks about having it be chaired by the director. So is that just a director's review? So a type 2 with everything else going to, you know, all type 3s go into planning commission as it currently stands. I think that's where we wanted some more discussion on that.
So I guess for me, I would say this would be applicable type 2s, right? It wouldn't be all type 2s.
Site and, Site and Design Review Committee?
Yeah.
I look as at the planning commission really being the Site and Design Review Committee Board Commission. I mean, obviously, you know, the Uh, I can understand that the language in here is a little vague. Tanny, I like the wording that you included in the definition that you've proposed about adding the planning commission. Since, since this is all proposed draft language, I think we can take what you put together. We can take what, who else submitted draft language?
Uh, no one submitted anything specific to this. There was just a couple of comments I received from Commissioner Wilcox regarding when I sent it out, asking for feedback on the definitions that we had discussed, the changes that were made.
I mean, as staff, we can come back now that we know kind of what changes you're looking for and propose them language to the commission. Does that sound good?
Yeah. I guess I was just trying to define a little bit. If the council wanted to charter the design review committee, what would we anticipate would be the work, their work product? If they did? Because they wouldn't have decision-making authority.
They only could recommend?
Right, they could comment. They could review and comment.
Well, you know, design review, design review, site design review are are type 3 applications that you're reviewing. That the commission is reviewing. You make, they're quasi judicial. You're making, you're making a decision on those site design reviews.
But what if it's a type 2?
Um, uh, it would be staff.
But so theoretically, so you have a type 2 that staff doesn't feel comfortable doing.
Then we could get up to a type 3.
Okay.
And our, this code allows for that. I've read that numerous times.
Right, we allow for that. I'm just wondering if there would be a situation where you'd have a type 2 that you didn't want to make a type 3, which you wanted some type of community feedback.
Well, we're gonna, I mean, during the type 2 process, we do send out, you know, notices to abutting, you know, neighbors within a certain amount of feet. Same with the type 3 applications, so. And the type 3 applications get a little more robust noticing, so we notice the site for some applications. And then the notification requirement is a longer distance.
Yeah, so and currently how, I just checked throughout the code to see where Site and Design Review Committee is even discussed outside of definitions.
Probably nowhere.
Uh, it's, it's discussed three, or four times, including the definition, so three outside. Outside of definitions, the first is under type 2 procedure. It discusses site and design review. Where it currently says, let me get back there really quickly. Uh, type 2 procedure, the Site and Design Review Committee or Director shall review plans for any permitted use in the underlying zoning district required requiring a building permit plumbing, electrical, or right-of-way, other than single-family dwelling under a type 2 site design review land use application. And then the next time it is discussed is under landscaping. Where it discusses, it's specifically section 8.060 landscaping and screening. A eight, or sorry, A9. Which is existing trees with a six inch or greater, or diameter or greater shall be preserved except when removal is specifically authorized by the Site and Design Review Committee or in the development approval. And then lastly, in Appendix A, which for, which is basically the downtown overlay. For additional requirements, so it's A.116. Additional requirements, provisions of this appendix to the development code shall be applicable to any construction or change in use subject to Site and Design Review. The Site and Design Review Committee will evaluate construction for compliance with these provisions and guidelines in the downtown concept plan. So in a sense, how I'm reading this is that the Site and Design Review Committee is kind of a number of things as of right now. So I think that's also why it's good that we're doing some clarification. Sounds like how we handle it, type 2s, director, staff decision. If it's, if it's in the downtown, that's TCAB, where they can submit comments on anything that goes on in that area, anything within the overlay. And then for the only spot where it doesn't, to me, make a whole lot of sense is under the landscaping, which I understand what it's saying, but I don't understand how it pertains to all those other sections. So that's to me where it gets a little bit off. So it does kind of sound like it's used, but we don't have a specific committee for that. I think it's TCAB's kind of a committee. Staff is the other, you know, deciding factor for type 3s. Because we don't have a specific committee that just looks at design of buildings. Because we have designs, some design standards specifically in the downtown that TCAB would review and make sure they're using the proper materials. Landscaping meets, and then we do landscaping review during development. And if it's a type 3 site development review, then obviously that would, that would be elevated to planning commission to review that as well and make sure they're meeting the proper standards of the code.
So if you had site and design review, they'd be reviewing type 2s outside of the town center theoretically. If you deemed it was necessary.
Correct.
Correct. Can I make a suggestion?
Absolutely.
Because I've had like fresh eyes on this code and I don't know if all of you have a code book in front of you, but Chapter 2, which is Procedures for Decision Making. It's TDE 2-1 at the very bottom. So that chart at the very top, that talks about the type 1 procedure, type 2, type 3, type 4. Um, I think what would be helpful and clarify a lot about who is reviewing what is listing the types of applications for each one of those types. So in that type 2 procedure, you could also, you would, you would list site design review. And all the other applications that fall under a type 2 procedure. Same with the type 3 and, and a type 4. Does that make sense?
Commissioner Wilcox?
I'm following, go ahead.
Okay, you good?
Yeah.
Yeah, so just adding those in that table.
Yeah, the, I mean, it clarifies roles, it clarifies, you know, what applications are, what review. It's a one-stop shop, kind of like right there at that table to figure out what kind of review it is. And we can add some additional information to in there about review processes. In addition to cleaning up that site design review definition to match what's in that table.
Okay.
What do you think, Dakota?
I think that'd be beneficial. I think that's a lot of the time, I mean, not everybody looks at the code before giving us a call, which is understandable. That's what we're here to do as staff, is to help the public or developers better understand the code. But if we could, if, when they have questions about what is this? Like, for example, conditional use, because we just went over one of those, right? There could be different types of conditional uses. However, nine times out of 10, it's a type 3. And when I explain that, they have a lot of questions. Then like, what is a type 3? Well, if you see here, if we, I can direct them to a specific section of the code rather than having them just go to, oh, if you look at the type 3 procedure, this is what it is. It's, here's a list of all of the types of applications by type. Could be beneficial.
That's it.
Okay.
That's my two cents for tonight.
Yeah, so.
I might have another two cents to throw around, but we'll see.
You only get six cents for the night, that's it. But we'd still put in there something about what they, what their role would be, right? Please, okay. We don't get scope creep or something here. All righty. It's a bad me.
Yeah, before we move on. After the week, because I wasn't able to write everything down that you had mentioned for that definition, if you wouldn't mind just emailing me your definition. That way I can add it and then we can also just, you know, we can work it and then bring it back. Uh, I don't want to lose that. Oh, he has, oh, cool, I can type it in there now. Thank you, sir.
Question I had for gym. Okay, do we need anything that says like exercise facility besides gym?
So if we go back to the active
versus passive?
That, yeah, the definition for active recreation. Let's go back. I'm sorry, I need to go back to it here. Where did you go? TDC 1-16. That's the page number.
Right.
So, sorry, I'm gonna read this out loud so we're all on the same page here. Active recreation, a place or use that contains facilities or features that include recreational components beyond those of a typical passive park. These amenities include, but are not limited to, sports fields, sports courts, skateboard, skateboard facilities, indoor recreation facilities, larger-scale playgrounds, water play features, dog parks, or similar amenities where their utilization may lead to traffic, lighting, or noise impacts to surrounding areas. If we, if the planning commission thinks a, like, an indoor gym facility meets kind of the intent of what is in that language there, we could just add indoor gym facility. But if you believe that the commission feels that a gym facility is, doesn't necessarily fit the intent of that language, maybe we'll want a new definition.
So I guess for me, I look at this and except for indoor recreation facilities, to me, it's a park. Right, if I read that, all these things kind of tell me park. Except for indoor recreation facilities. And when I look at this, other similar amenities where their utilization may lead to traffic, lighting, or noise impacts to surrounding areas. Well, that's possible, but if you've got, I'm just thinking small commercial spaces, yoga, Pilates, jiu-jitsu.
Pickleball.
Uh, stop it. But those types of things, I just don't know that they really fit into that. Because I think that's a higher standard. What do you guys think?
Commissioner Stephenson?
Oh, Commissioner Wilcox?
Yeah, I'm kind of thinking along the same lines as you. I'd like to see a separate definition for gym, but not necessarily the word gym. I made some notes for the, on my minutes here that didn't get approved. I wrote, I was trying to think of something that is more inclusive than gym, like some of the activities you were mentioning, Pilates, yoga, for example. I came up with physical activity facility, but just like to have something more, more inclusive. Remember back, a couple meetings, a couple meetings back where we had the pickleball and the jiu-jitsu. But I thought those should have been outright type 2s myself. But those, those should have been in something like we're looking at now, or something that we're looking at creating rather than what, what exists currently.
Okay, thank you. I was gonna say, like, go ahead.
Well, I was wondering, what we, what we care about is impact, right? How much traffic is there going to be? How much noise is there going to be? We care about that. How do we identify indoor gym or recreational facility without actually tying in like the senior citizen home that has a little activity area that basically the residents are the only ones that are using it, so outdoor impact traffic flow or certainly not usually a noise problem. How do we keep from, is it basically primary purpose?
Right.
Is the primary purpose of the senior citizens facility that half that's a recreational room? Or is it the primary purpose the recreational room?
Well, in that case, like what you're mentioning, the primary purpose would be the senior care facility and an amenity would be the recreational room. Whereas what we're talking about is something where that's its primary purpose.
Right.
And I would, I agree with Commissioner Wilcox. I was thinking like the jiu-jitsu one. I thought that was a tough one to come to planning commission for.
Oh, okay.
And, and I'm looking at the code now to see if we have a definition. Or somewhere in the code where it describes personal services.
Because it does, but it doesn't really address that act.
We want to avoid the presentation that has unintended consequences.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I, I was just thinking like exercise facility versus a gym. Would that be too?
But I, I think you would want to stay indoor.
Right, so you'd have an indoor exercise facility and it would be these types of uses exclusively.
You could do something like that.
Because otherwise you could have a major complex that does jiu-jitsu and so they're like, okay, we're golden here. And meanwhile, we're having major league problems.
You could do, yeah, we could definitely look at a definition like that. And then I would suggest then with the definition of active, we go back to that definition really quick. We may want.
Page 1-16.
Thank you. We may want to look at
indoor recreation.
Removing that, that, and, yeah, removing indoor recreation facilities from active recreation.
That would clean it up and there wouldn't be confusion then.
Correct.
Because I look at that and say, oh, there could be a gym there, but we already have a definition of gym, so which one do I use?
Great.
So why did not pickleball and move fitness come under recreation activity?
The reasoning, my understanding last time was, uh, it was a, like, heavily leaning on the coaching aspect of it, personal training. So it was like personal services at the time for move specifically.
Right, yeah.
But then pickleball would come under indoor recreation facility.
Well, it would, but indoor recreation facility was not a permitted use.
In that.
In that facility.
In that facility, so that's why it came here. But it was kind of like this whole thing with the one at Cherry Park and the one at Troutdale kind of got us going, oh. You know, you don't realize sometimes how these things are until you have a use that hits them right in the head.
Right, and you know, if we think about indoor active recreation facilities, I think of pickleball actually as an indoor because it's bigger, right? It's, it's a large facility.
But it's a one, it's, it's not like multiple different, like different exercise equipment. It's all one thing.
Right, so what you could, what you could do, I'm just throwing this out here again as suggestions, is you could clarify in the use table. You know, recreation facilities over a certain square footage are a conditional use permit. Right? Because the bigger they are, the larger their impacts may be to the community. Just throwing it out there.
So what is jiu-jitsu?
So the last time we classed, so Dakota. I think Dakota and Nick had a conversation about what jiu-jitsu, what jiu-jitsu and what the pickleball facility, what it should fall under. And reading the active transportation, or transportation, reading the active recreation definition where it states, where it states in there, indoor recreation facilities. definition where it states, where it states in there, indoor recreation facilities. It was determined that those uses fell under that use. It wasn't exactly crystal clear.
It was, uh, yeah, to piggyback, it was, it was a lot of discussion that the assistant planner Nick and I had on, well, if pickleball's falling under it, can we look at this as a, you know, personal service? Uh, cause it is, you know, jiu-jitsu is very much hands-on. Or, and they're taking classes, or does, but it is an indoor, you know, recreation. And it's like, well, you're not really there lifting weights, that is kind of, you know, that's why move was able to get through is they had, they got through with the personal services type aspect. We didn't necessarily agree with that. And that's why discussing, you know, it wasn't a perfect solution, but that's how we both agreed, hey, we're gonna agree to this, we're gonna move forward that until we have something different within our code, this is how we're gonna look at all of these coming in in the future. Um, just because I think personal services for that kind of a use was a bit of a stretch. And that's, and we both agreed to that. Cause it's not the primary use of that, or the primary function of that use, it's the accessory use of that. So like a gym, say move, its primary function is a place for people to go work out. They have classes, but it's not what everybody's there doing compared to jiu-jitsu. They're all classes. No one's just there by themselves type thing. They're usually going there for a class to train or something, and it is more hands-on. So if we were gonna look at one compared to the other, we just couldn't really come to the same kind of determination of the previous plan.
So what is the Taekwondo studio right there by move, what is it under?
That, I'm not sure. I'm assuming it's under personal services, cause that was before my time. And I think that's kind of, I saw a little bit of something that you're seeing, it's a little bit of a changing of the guard of how Nick and I interpret the code compared to previous planners. Where we do like that the code has some wiggle room for us to have these discussions, cause that's how we then make a decision along now, having a director, uh, along with the director, we move forward with that interpretation. So we like having some wiggle room, but we're, we're both a little more literal with our interpretations of the code. Without getting too wordy with definitions.
So would you rather have indoor activities still left in that definition of recreational active? Because of pickleball and because of jiu-jitsu? Because those are for, you know, they're not like a gym gym.
Large indoor recreational facilities.
I think.
You could determine large.
I think similar to what Erica had mentioned earlier, is that if we could have some sort of square footage on it, kind of how we do in some, some other sections of our code with, you know, have a little subsection on the side. For example, they're like that in a lot of industrial. If you're gonna have a commercial use within industrial, C section, D. And then it says if it's over five, if it's under five thousand square feet, then it's, it's permitted. If not, there's additional requirements type thing. We can do something along those lines where it's a little bit, that way we can have a yoga studio, Pilates, jiu-jitsu, karate fall under a category that would be permitted, say where, like say in the the market where the pickleball went, but if something larger would have to go through a little bit, cause it's gonna create more noise compared to a smaller facility, if that makes sense.
So can I summarize this really quick?
Yes, okay.
So we would actually, so with what Dakota has just stated, we would keep the active recreation definition. And then in table, if you turn to page three dash twenty-three in your code, for other uses where you see recreational facilities active, we could, we could split this out. So recreation facilities active, you know, less than twenty thousand, I'm just gonna make up a number here, less than twenty thousand square feet, it would be outright permitted. And then if you're over twenty thousand square feet, twenty thousand square feet, it would be a conditional use.
Similar to if you, cause I've been looking at this section a lot, I've had a lot of calls lately. Similar to in the industrial, or in the commercial section where we discuss, we're sorry, actually in the mixed use, sorry.
Oh, general retail above sixty thousand, and then general retail up. So if you look at the page before, three dash twenty-two, and kind of how, how those are broken up in the zone. So you have general retail above sixty thousand square feet is a conditional use in the C Z zone.
But you wouldn't do these with that scale.
No, no, that would be a different, that's just an idea, like that's how we could do it, come to a idea for average size.
Question, where you've got the most concentration of these would be the corporate center. Uh, Rigger and Teenies, how big are those?
We would do some research.
We would have, we would be doing research. I can't tell you right off the top of my head, uh, cause I haven't looked at them.
Those to me would be on the larger side, both of them.
What, O'Malley's is over there, the gym?
It's, uh, it's over on the commercial park down.
Ritter's back here.
Yeah, Teenies is on the end.
Yeah, but O'Malley's.
And then you've got Rigger's next to Teenies.
And, uh, right by Marine Drive.
Okay, towards the front.
Towards the front, and it's fairly small.
Yeah, there's a small, the other two are fairly large.
Yeah, so that's what I was thinking when you were talking about square footage. You've got a gym who identifies as a gym workout equipment, but they're barely, they're taken up by two bays at that warehouse.
Just like, you know, yoga, Pilates are kind of the same way where they take up less than, you know, on average, I would say less than five thousand square feet. So those, you know, professional gym studios.
Where would you put those in the definition?
So I would, I would keep where it says the, you know, active recreation. I would, or indoors active recreation. But within the use table, I would split up where it talks about active recreation facilities on page three dash two-three. And say, you know, active recreation facilities, you know, less than, you know, I'm just gonna throw out a number again, less than ten thousand square feet are permitted outright within those two zones. Active recreation facilities that are larger than, you know, twenty thousand square feet would be a conditional use permit.
And you kind of, and to go back to what you were mentioning about, you know, smaller actual gym with workout equipment compared to a larger, I think it would still fall, if you have that, it would, that makes a little more sense to still allow that, permit that outright because it's still smaller. It's based on the, you're not gonna have as many people coming through there. Look at Snap Fitness compared to an L A Fitness.
Right.
Snap Fitnesses are usually smaller scale, usually inside of corporate parks where L A Fitness or move, or, or, yeah, move or a
Or in a larger commercial.
Are a larger standalone structures most time, or a larger plaza where they have more square footage. So I think that's kind of where, if you wanna have a really big gym, you're gonna have to go through a conditional use where you won't be looking at that space anyway, but it allows people who wanna have a smaller gym, I mean, say even CrossFit, they're usually smaller fit, uh, smaller gyms rather than large scale that have ellipticals and weights and this and do classes. Those are larger scale gyms that would be not per, or conditionally permitted, but likelihood of them looking for a site or, you know, something that's that small wouldn't be, they wouldn't be looking at that.
Commissioner Andrews?
Uh, thank you. I, I'm kind of just trying to think outside the box a little bit too when it comes to not just gyms, but active indoor, and I know there's that recent, um, off of Stark, there's like a shopping center, I think it's technically like Wood Village, but it's, um, like the Skyzone. So it's like a trampoline park, for example, so.
Cause that's an indoor park, it's up there right at the back, yeah.
So like swinging by to like Buy Mart or something and you see like kids running all over the place, you see a lot more traffic than obviously there would be at like the Harbor Freight next door or something like that. It would make sense to me to, yeah, maybe change that up a little bit to reflect the scale of something to maybe. If it's generating, if it. Right, I understand that, but I'm just using that as an example, like it could have just as easily opened up in the pickleball area, so we're gonna do something like that. So it's something we should be considering my forward.
Right, and also they have like the arcade over in Gresham, that's in that.
Oh, Wonder, Wonderland?
Yeah, one, yeah, Wonderland. They also have a racetrack, a movie theater. I mean, it's like all encompassing. So that would be square footage again, cause it's on a larger scale. But it's entertainment.
Entertainment.
Right, right.
So, so.
I like the square footage thing.
Surely you, you bring up a next relevant point, so if you look at page three dash twenty-three, entertainment facilities, you have major and minor.
Right.
Right.
So it kind of, it falls within that same line of thinking.
Maybe that's something we should look at as well.
Yep.
Give us square footage, it gives you guys a clearer. So if somebody come in with just a little theater, that didn't take up a lot of room.
Is that the way you would like to, is that the way the commission would like to move forward?
By square footage?
Yeah.
I kinda like that idea.
Okay, yeah. Commissioner Wilcox?
One problem I have going with square footage, I think I've brought this up with the pickleball facility, actually. When you're, when you're approving a fifty or forty or fifty or sixty thousand dollar square foot grocery, and some, I, I mean, move for example, moving into the Safeway, Safeway is gonna require a whole, whole heck of a lot more parking than move ever will. But you're, you know, you're, you're heading in the direction of making move a conditional approval. Or if, you know, if another grocery chain moved into that same building, it would be permitted outright.
But it's just a significantly different use. I guess would be my argument to that.
And also when, I mean, when Albertson's was at where Skyzone and Harbor Freight is, the parking is still the same, but if, since Skyzone opened up, it's hard to even find parking even at the bank. So I can, the use was changed. So we don't know what, how much more of the parking it's gonna take up.
Commissioner Allen?
Just for reference, I like the direction. I was just, I'm sharing you what I was looking at so that everybody knows the same information. Pickleball court, standard pickleball court, eight hundred eighty square feet, right? Standard basketball court, we're looking at four thousand seven, uh, seven hundred square feet. Just to give you an idea, you know, at what point do you say, okay, well, this is a lot, it's gonna create some impact? One pickleball court, two, how many basketball courts, with or without seating, right?
That's a good question.
And I, and I think we, as staff, we can do that research. We could look at some, the average square foot of some large gyms and the average square foot of small gyms that offer. We can see what they offer in those small, in those smaller gyms or gym studios, as I like to kind of call them.
Placeholders. Okay. Commissioner Andrews?
If, I guess, my question is, what's the main advantage to, is it more advantageous for you to have the specific square footage to work off of versus having kind of a little bit more of a, the wiggle room, as you say, to putting something like major and minor on there?
I think we would need to define, I, I, I think the square footage helps us define what's major and minor.
So I would say that's probably a good move to do.
So you may get the person that wants, you know, a basketball court in the backyard, right? Private use, not a lot of impact, non-inspectable, you know, selling tickets to games and stuff like that. Or you got one where, yeah, there's gonna be seating and crowd and they're gonna have activities several times a week or whatever. Very different uses, so you do have to have some kind of attachment in it beyond just size. How is it being used?
Well, and, and even with the pickleball, they said they were gonna have like
Tournaments.
Tournaments and stuff like that, that impacts.
That impacts more than, maybe my kids might wanna go play for a moment.
Or pickleball at a, they played pickleball at a tennis court, a lot of people do that.
Yeah, so with the recreation, the active recreation facilities in this table, I think staff, we can take a, we'll take a look at it. And one, one other thing is we can split it up to as indoor active recreation facilities and then outdoor recreation facilities.
I like that idea.
And so the indoor active recreation facilities would then be kind of split into two based on square footage.
All the other would be permitted outright?
Correct.
Yeah. Commissioner Wilcox? Does that work?
Um, I'd have to see the numbers.
For sure, and I understand that, for sure.
Like what, a couple thousand feet is one standard and then up from there?
Can I come back to that? So outdoor pickleball court would be approved automatically?
Well, we can.
I thought that.
Yeah, I know, I would, that's where I was going next. Outdoor pickleball is probably gonna be one that's gonna be conditional in any circumstance because of the noise.
Right.
And I, you know, for any outdoor recreational, any outdoor active recreational facility, I would probably put that into the conditional use category. Just because
Right.
there'll be lighting, there'll be, it'll create noise.
Well, you'd say it'd be permitted outright, and I think.
Yeah, no, I.
We probably don't want to do that.
And I'm gonna speak to two different comments that I heard. One, Commissioner Wilcox, how you had mentioned, it's a really great point. I remember you bringing it up during the pickleball discussion of, you know, if we're doing conditional for a pickleball facility and then a grocery store is able to go in, permit it outright. I think the difference there is say it was an indoor pickleball facility first and then the grocery was going to come in. Even though it's permitted, we would still need to make sure that they're meeting the proper parking standards to meet the level. Cause right, right now, the pickleball facility doesn't need as, nearly as much as a grocery store would need. That's why they have ample amounts of parking for what they're doing. But we would typically look at that through the building permit. We wouldn't, unless they're doing any sort of major change that would require them to do a site development review, we would then say, hey, you need to make sure you have these, these parking spots in order to meet the use stand, the standard that is laid out in our code. Uh, and then we would make sure they meet that through a building permit process, so we would do a review. That's how we would kind of look at that to make sure. It is an interesting concept and I, unfortunately, I don't think there's a really great way to kind of answer that question, cause it's a really great question of, you know, well, if this has to be conditional, even though it has a lesser of an impact, but this has to be, this can be permitted. That's kind of how we would look at it and still make sure that they're meeting standards. But I, again, I think it's just a really great question. So I just wanted to kind of, you know, how we would look at that a little bit. Uh, and then also for Commissioner Allen, the difference between like a large scale compared to a small scale is that would no longer be, I would say you're talking about basketball court, right? That would no longer be under an act, a recreation facility, that would be considered a stadium. So we would look at that under major entertainment. Because people are coming to watch something, say it's like a, a large outdoor, you know, football stadium or people are coming to like a larger basketball kind of situation to come watch. Even if it's indoor, we would look at that as entertainment rather than active. Active is more like, oh, we're gonna go, you're gonna have a large gym, maybe two courts to do, play pickup ball that's open on weekends or something like that. That would be a recreation. But if people, if they're going to be holding tournaments and, or, you know, it's gonna be more large scale specific for viewership and entertainment for people to come watch, we would look at that as more as a small scale stadium, which would be under a entertainment major, is how we would look at it right now.
Yeah, it gets to your house, it means.
Exactly, yeah, exactly.
How much seating is it? Is it seating fifty thousand or is it seating, you know, twenty?
Exactly, yeah, exactly. So I just wanted to kind of just comment on that, cause I was, while you were speaking, I was looking around and see how we would look at that, cause there So I just wanted to kind of just comment on that, because I was, while you were speaking, I was looking around and see how we would look at that, because they're both great questions, so. That's how we would look at it as of right now.
And I was just gonna say back to Commissioner Wilcox's comment, you know, like if you go in with a grocery store, granted, you've got production facilities and things of that nature, but you've only got a handful of water closets in the building. And you're doing a bake-off bakery and a PP meet, so I mean, you've got production water that you're using, but not that much. I would bet you that the impact Move is gonna have more impact with showers and a pool on the water and sewer system than the grocery store would. So I think just from that standpoint, you would wanna take a, a pretty good look at it. Maybe. Okay, we good on that one? I think.
I think so. I think we have direction on right now.
What else you guys got? This has been great discussion, but I'm not gonna keep doing this, because we're gonna get you talking about. Stop it.
Did we have any other definitions on the, on the list?
I have a question on one that came up. Commissioner Andrews, you were talking about the levels of charging stations and you thought we might need to identify those. Said like one, two, and three. And you thought that might be necessary to do that because of the electrical draw? Did I have that right?
That's potentially the case. I, I would say typically for public charging, if you're looking at level two or three, one is kind of irrelevant and useless, so I, two, level two charging is like a destination charging. They have, like them in front of hotels, you know, there's like little small charging stations that are generally as far as the amperage requirements, you're looking at like a two twenty volt sort of apparatus, whereas like a supercharger, level three charging, you're looking at more of a direct current, uh, high, high yield, like you know, two, two hundred miles an hour kind of, kind of charge.
So more than two twenty?
Yeah, more than two twenty. So there might be a need to do that. I mean, the data is there currently, I think, when it comes to we have like in the, the shopping center, there's like the level three charging, whereas like by the mayor's square, we have level two charging, I believe. So we kind of have differentiated charging currently in place within the city in that, in that regard. So I don't know if that helps kind of put together a framework as far as like if it is helpful to differentiate between the levels or if it is literally just electric charging and then you know, I
The owner can decide what level goes in.
Exactly, like what level they wanna, we have wire at four, basically.
I guess the reason I bring that up is if you're at four hundred, which is the next step after two oh eight, right? I don't know that we offer four hundred everywhere.
That's, sorry, I'm gonna play dumb here.
That's over my head.
Thank you, thank you.
Like two oh eight of a Y transformer.
If I plug it in and it works, I'm good.
Two oh eight of a Y transformer.
Would do it.
On a level two, I believe.
No, I'm saying if you need stronger than two oh eight.
Oh, yeah, you're, you're, you're quite optique, but you're good optique, what, four oh eight or something like that.
Right, and I know we typically run those like in industrial areas. Right, but not always in commercial areas. So.
Adrian has his hand up.
I see that. Mr. Kestrel, do you have a comment?
Just a, just a little bit of information on the difference between level two and level three charging, just because as the discussion was going, I was looking it up. The level two charging as stated is, is basically your two oh eight volt circuit that's standard AC power like is, like exists in a lot of homes. Level three charging is DC powered. There's essentially a, a, a very large battery and, and rectifiers there that, that charge the, the car batteries directly with DC power, which is why it's able to do so much, much, much faster. So it's not like four, four eighty volt or anything like that. It's, it's, it's different power altogether. It's, it's basically a giant battery pack that, that is what allows that level three to, to charge much, much faster.
Okay, thank you.
Does it list an average?
I would have to dig into that, but all right, what I do know from my, from my own past experience is from a, from a handling and safety standpoint, DC is a very different animal. It has, it has some specific concerns. In some ways, it's more dangerous than, than an AC charging station. In some ways, it's less. But it's, it's just, it's a different kind of animal.
I wouldn't say it's a matter of safety. I mean, these things are highly regulated and obviously like with good reason. In regards to the amperage, at this point, the max amperage we're looking at for like a, a vol, like a level three charger is upwards of six hundred and fifteen amps. The most common like level three chargers are still at about like four hundred and twenty-five amps. It's kind of as an average.
So it's not really like a
So what's, what's the average of the ones at Amazon? They have electric trucks that pull their trailers around. They charge them.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good question. I don't, I don't know.
I know there, because I, I walk down there all the time in the mountains, yeah.
That is interesting.
That'd be interesting to know, yeah. I'm just
Whether it's DC and
Right.
creature, is it the
Like, again, like
But those two, I guess, I mean, I guess technically that wouldn't be falling under like a separate zone in that particular instance, because it's
Right.
within the Amazon zoneage, but if there were individual, like I honestly don't know. I mean, we have level three chargers within the shopping center too, which is probably not necessarily zoned separately for any kind of charging. It's just a part of the
The parking lot.
Right.
Right.
And, you know, so I don't, I don't know exactly how that would
Yeah, maybe you, because level two, level three are substantial infrastructure. Right? Whereas level one is elsewhere than
Next level, yeah.
One ten, right? Um, nothing special, so.
Yeah.
Well, and this is good clarification for me, because the way I just interpreted from the last meeting was that level three could be something more significant than two oh eight, and I didn't want us to put something in here
Sure.
that we couldn't provide as far as infrastructure, right?
Good point.
I, if I recall correctly, um, at, at a previous meeting last year, there was a large, it was actually Tesla, I think, battery bank that was planned for the northern industrial area within one of those sections, correct, like by the marshalls?
Correct.
The wetlands, yeah.
It's next to FedEx.
Lot eleven, yeah.
Right. Interesting. No, and then that was, so I'd be curious, you know, I guess like, I mean, that's probably within the utilities
Correct, a pub, public utility.
Subsection, right, okay. So I guess, I, I, yeah, I guess my question, I mean, somebody would be making money off of charging infrastructure more than likely. So I don't know if it would, but I don't know if that would technically like a utility is, is typically reserved for like public use, correct, like city, city infrastructure potentially?
I mean, and it goes back onto the grid, so it may go
Yeah, like it's, it's like a cell tower. Okay.
Same thing.
So I guess I'm just kind of thinking aloud between like if it should just be kind of a subsection located with a util, like an existing like utility? Or if it, if it is separately defined, if it is something that we should be specifying and then separating out by a charging level, like you were saying, due to infrastructure
Well, and I just I don't know that I need that now, because it doesn't sound like we're gonna have that type of demand
Sure.
to where we would need that. And as far as like the, the battery one, that one got approved in the industrial zone under utility
Sure.
major, right? Yeah.
Okay.
Which is coming, by the way.
Yes, they're, a lot of building permits consular, so, yeah, they're, they're working on it.
You're a self-truck backed, I think.
Yeah, and I think my comment on that would be as far as, you know, drain to the public system is when someone comes in, obviously, I, I'm not an engineer. I'm not, I know very little about that side of things. That's where the public works department, that's where they really will thrive in their comments and requirements. They may even come back, that's why we require them, you know, have a free app beforehand, whoever's trying to, you know, depending on what they're trying to do. And that's where they would come back with either comments or hey, you have to make sure you do this or this, or we can't support that. Sorry, type thing. And before they ever submit something, we would make sure that we had those discussions prior. So I think as far as, you know, the levels of what we can supply as a city based on our grid, we, that would be handled prior to anything that coming in. So I don't think it needs to be specifically listed out or specified within the definition. I think hey, this is great, if you wanna do it, it's, you know, you can do it here, or like, hey, we do have EV charging as, as an option if you wanna add it to your, your, your current gas station. But if you're trying to do like a full bank gas station, just EV, you might wanna come talk to us first.
So we came back to, I, I know I had a question about an ATM being a financial institution. It sounds like it is.
So the reason why it was highlighted in that spreadsheet is that discussion, I was trying to keep notes during it, got a little into the weeds for me, so I couldn't keep track of what we were saying. I was trying to keep track and I was trying to keep, type it. That's why it's highlighted is because I don't remember where we last stood on that. So that's why it's highlighted.
So just like a single, like, can I clear?
A kiosk.
A kiosk, thank you. That's where I was going, because within our commercial zoning districts, we do have drive-through kiosks. And they're permitted uses.
Right.
So that would be in the kiosk, bank kiosk. Instead of a coffee kiosk, it would be a bank kiosk. That makes sense.
But does that make it a financial institution? I guess is my question.
Remember one of the earlier discussions about ATMs is typically you have to have extra patrols, routers, something, because you don't want to create the prime magic, right?
Right.
You have to be able to keep it under control.
I think we can add maybe a little clarification, like with kiosk drive-through only, it could be kiosk slash you know, single standing ATM.
Because they're regulated differently. Federally.
Oh, I see, interesting.
So we could say like, you know, single, single standing ATM.
Right. Commissioner Wilcox?
Yeah, it sounds like you're starting to distinguish between like an ATM in a hotel lobby and a a drive-by like the Wells Fargo on Division by the golf course. Is that, is that where you're going with this?
Yes, so the, the ATM machine next to the golf course, is that on division? I believe, so I would classify that under a, a kiosk.
Right.
A kiosk drive-through only. And that, you could find that definition or that use on TDC page three dash twenty-two.
There's still one down by the chargers at the outlet mall.
I, I would just think like a financial institution would be brick and mortar.
Right, that's how
So there's one down at the outlet mall down here.
Yeah, there's a kiosk.
A kiosk.
By the
Right.
By the chargers.
Right.
So that's a, yeah, a kiosk.
Yeah.
But that would be a kiosk versus a institution.
I think it's still an offset of an institution.
Yeah, it's still
Because unless you're doing a standalone that you would see, say, in a you know, that, that's not linked specifically to a bank, because most of those kiosks are, they're not, you know, the classic ones you would say see in like a grocery or like a convenience store that, oh, they're cash only, they have an ATM sitting there. That's different. You're not gonna see one of those styles of the ATMs in a kiosk. Those kiosks are typically a Wells Fargo, Chase Bank, a so they're a part of the finance, financial institution. They're just a standalone rather than the brick and mortar, where it's presence within a building.
But the brick and mortar financial institutions are regulated differently than the ATMs are.
Yeah, I think that's getting into the weeds a little bit, but I have another question. So if we look at page three dash twenty-two where we have these uses for kiosks, drive-through only. And then we have the use category for financial institutions, no drive-through. Then we have financial institutions with drive-through. Here's my question. Financial institutions with no drive-through and financial institutions with drive-through are both permitted. Why don't we just say financial institutions permitted niche? Problem solved.
Before I say I agree. I do wonder what the reasoning was behind it in the first place, but I don't feel like there's an easy way to tell.
I think I, I, there is a difference, because in downtown, the downtown area, a financial institution is allowed to have a drive-through.
Right.
Oh, that makes sense, yeah.
There are no drive-throughs allowed in the
That's true.
Town center.
Yeah.
And so like an example, you put a kiosk down at the outlet mall, it's really no big deal. You put a freestanding bank in there with a double lane drive-through, that's a little more of a thing.
But
What?
Sorry, I'm just getting but it says and I would have to go back to our town center plan and read a little bit more in the, in the town center chapter. But in the commercial and general commercial zones, which the town center has some different zoning types in there. But if we would took, if we took a look at our zoning map for the general and, and commercial zones, both are permitted with a drive-through or without a drive-through, so it sounds like you could just say financial institutions permitted. Oh, I can make everyone one of these, like a big one.
This is why I was bringing it up.
It only becomes
Because it doesn't totally make sense.
It doesn't make sense.
Okay.
It only becomes stickier, right, in the town center.
In the town center, but that's an overlay district, so the, the, it's an overlay district, so
I'm making a note of that, so we can do a little research and see what it says in the
That, that's my understanding.
Yeah, they didn't want any drive-throughs
Right.
in town, because
Right, in town, yeah.
To fill the town.
I thought they changed that several years ago, didn't they?
I don't think so. Not, not in the town center.
That's, yeah.
I, I think that's where I came, I think that's where it originally came from.
There was a discussion about the outlet mall.
This was, I thought, the handy property. There was somebody several years ago looking at put the drive-through there.
There was. And they're also looking at the property right here where the brewery is, but that's back when I was regulated, right? Processed.
So I just wanna say, I think staff, we definitely have direction on that one.
Okay.
On where to go.
All right.
If, if we could briefly circle back to the electric vehicle charging. Um, I thi, I was just trying to remember the conversation remember last time, I, because I remember the discussion being the fact that with a subsection or with a section like that, it would work in most cases, whereas it's like for a fueling station like that with a, a gas station, you could easily add that in. But you couldn't do the reverse with like, if you were doing electronic or EV charging, you couldn't just add fueling as well, like gas.
Correct.
And that sort of thing.
Hmm.
Um, what I was looking at in particular with that lens was it is permitted, uh, I I would say obviously that would fall currently under. Uh, commercial when it comes to vehicular and equipment services, fueling stations, I mean. That if if that were, you know, included within that, it's conditional for community commercial, permitted for general commercial, okay, I guess that can make sense. But I'm looking also in industrial and within like the same section of automobile, truck trailer, heavy equipment, recreational vehicle. Uh, fueling stations, truck stops, service stations, tire shops, oil change facilities, which is most closely what that would fall under. It's not permitted in industrial parks, but looking again at what. Uh, industrial parks entail, technically, something like EV charging would. Be able to fit into something like that because it doesn't have the odor or anything else like that that has the off, off. Direct off property impact, so it would technically enable us to allow something in order for electric vehicles to charge in industrial parks, like somebody. Goes to work, for example, out there that wants to charge up, or there's a commercial bank out there, something like that would technically work based on what I'm reading.
And then to go back to our zoning map here, that actually showed, we only have one area in the city that is zoned for an industrial park.
Yeah. Okay.
Or.
Or light industrial.
Or, so we have, we have employment areas, right, we have, um.
Yeah.
You know, the the light and general industrial areas to the north here.
Right.
And then to the south, just east of Mount Hood Community College along Troutdale Road. We have designated one little area right here as industrial park.
Oh, I guess the grays were kinda throwing.
I know, it's 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 difficult.
Okay, so that's the technically the only industrial park area down there, so.
Yes, and I.
So that up there with the actual industrial parks are actually light industrial up top, the light gray.
So, so the the, um, dark, yes, the darker gray is light industrial and then the lighter gray is industrial park. So this is general, this is heading, this is kind of, this is general industrial.
Right.
This is lighten industrial up here.
Yep. Okay.
And then down here is industrial park.
God, okay, I was thinking that this was listed as industrial park because technically it seemed like that was.
Kind of what's there.
Yeah, exactly, okay, that makes more sense to me then.
How it felt over time. Yep.
Okay.
I just had this conversation a week ago.
That's fine, okay.
Yeah.
Alright, thanks for clarifying.
Good? Commissioner Wilcox?
I'm good.
Alright. I will say real quick, I'm just looking at where all the places financial institutions are located within the code.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it is quite interesting, actually, uh, so it's listed both for mixed use. Uh, listed in commercial use and then also listed industrial. Industrial doesn't list out drive-through or non-drive-through, but the others do. Industrial zones are the areas where they're conditionally not permitted, uh, and that's why it doesn't list out drive-through or not. The other zones for mixed use and commercial list out both drive-through and and non-drive-through, all of which are permitted. The only subset is under.
Mixed use.
Mixed use standards for specifically the urban mixed use, which is the downtown.
Mm-hmm, right.
Uh, that calls out financial institutions with a drive-through ATM or similar setup for transactions. Shall have adjacent offices or public facing services related to that use. So it doesn't, really doesn't make any sense why we say permitted and not, or like permitted, or have it split out in those two zones, because they're permitted regardless. There's just an additional standard for the MU three zone, saying that if you're gonna have a drive-through in downtown.
Right.
Like a kiosk, you better have a, it should be attached to a brick and mortar downtown.
Brick and mortar.
Yeah.
And that you can't just have like a random kiosk down there.
Yeah.
But they're all permitted, which I found kind of interesting that we split them out when really they're all.
Sure, there's no need at this moment, because the overlay handles it.
Can't have a drive-through. Bank in downtown.
I don't believe so. You're saying you can?
It's, it's not listing it is not.
Just sets back it.
It's saying that it has to be attached to a.
It's just saying that it has to have a brick and mortar, or a brick and mortar, sorry.
So technically, if a bank building were to open up downtown that had a drive-through, it'd be permitted, but it has to be attached to a building downtown.
Right.
But it is conditional on it. Is that correct?
Permitted, permitted, it's permitted already, so that makes sense.
It's permitted.
It's per, it's permitted.
And and they had one, but it it just wasn't a drive-through.
Sure.
Which more than likely, they, okay, it'd be difficult to do in general.
Which one?
Very difficult downtown.
Uh, the old police station, it used to be.
No, that, that had a drive-through.
Yeah.
Oh, it did have.
Yeah, it was US Bank.
It did.
Before it was US Bank, when it was PB, security, a security bank, it had a drive-through.
Security. A security. Yeah?
Um.
That's technically, if that one old service station downtown were to transform into a bank and turn that little.
That's a hidden day.
Thinkin' back to my childhood.
Interesting.
Yeah.
Didn't do a lot of banking back then.
Living late. But it'd be permitted.
Hypothetically, if that were to happen, I don't think they would have the proper access.
I think that's where they're run, you'd run in more of that than anything else.
True, sure.
Hello, quirk's it.
Oh, look at that one. I just have to go back and look and see what we changed, I just didn't remember what changed.
The change to the drive-through.
Nothing's listed out, uh, as far as appendix ending either.
Yeah, I just have to.
Do you, do you wanna have that conversation of?
Well, just being, I just don't remember changes, but I'm old and so.
Okay.
Yeah, see, I I remember.
You probably had that conversation at some point in time.
No, I I remember that in the beginning, they didn't want any kind of drive-through of any kind downtown.
Oh, yeah, it's been that way for decades.
Yeah, I mean, and I'm, I I'm kinda curious as to when that changed. I know that the bank was not considered the old police station.
It didn't change for downtown, so I know that.
Okay, um, let's see, next one up would be. Entertainment, as in adult entertainment.
Oh, wow, oh, sorry.
Yeah, want 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 me to go ahead?
Yeah, please.
Cuz I know prior to my arrival with the city, I know that there was some conversations about adult entertainment businesses and. How and how they cannot. Hmm, you know, be regulated within the city, we can't, we can't outright ban them. But what we can do, just like with, um, other uses, like I'm just gonna throw out marijuana because that's the easy one to throw out there. Is the city, we can put some parameters around that type of use, and they're called time, place, manner restrictions. Um. I am gonna go ahead and share some draft language here with the group, hold on one second. Alright, and so what, um. What we have here, I didn't. We would need a definition for adult entertainment, and I didn't, haven't proposed drafted any language for that quite yet. But I was looking at our zoning map and trying to figure out time, place, manner restrictions and what would make the most sense. So we know that these type of facilities, um. You know, would be, are permitted in the, um. General commercial zone, which is the red zone, um, and so what I did is added some language here. Um, so we would put adult entertainment. Um, we would put adult entertainment within our land use table for general commercial and put a C for a conditional use. And then under additional requirements, underneath the use table, we would put some parameters around that type of use. And so here up on the screen, and I'm just gonna read it, um, out loud. Um, an adult entertainment business shall only be located in the general commercial zone and are not permitted within the town center boundary. An adult entertainment business shall not be located within one thousand feet of an existing or previously approved adult entertainment business. Public parks, churches, schools, and daycare centers. And adult entertainment businesses shall not be located within two hundred and fifty feet of a residentially zoned property. Both the distances shall be measured in a straight line without regard to intervening structures from the closest structural wall of the adult entertainment business. To either the closest structural wall of the existing or previously approved adult entertainment business, or to the closest property line of all impacted properties. So when you take a look at those parameters, so when you take a look at the zone and kind of put all those parameters in place. I did a little GIS analysis here, and the parcels that are outlined, um. With the black line would be the only parcels that would allow for that type of use within that zone. But with a single caveat, if you had one of those businesses, they would have to be a thousand feet.
From another.
From another one.
How long's that stretch?
How long is that stretch?
I, I need to, I need to come back.
Nine hundred ninety-seven. Sorry. Um. Time, place, and manner.
Time, place, and manner.
Okay, any thoughts on that?
To give a rough guest, uh, rough guesstimation of how far it is from end to end, it's right around thirty-four hundred square feet.
Okay.
Give her the hundred, thirty-four hundred, lit by feet.
Yeah, yeah, give, give or take, really rough measurement on.
Thank you, DePada.
Ten, if you get three in there, right?
Three, and then the little, the last one would be small, be three and a half.
Just pack, just pack it all in there.
Would.
Realistic.
This is gonna sound funny, but wouldn't that? I know it's adult entertainment, but wouldn't that be under entertainment?
That's why we would create a a new definition.
Right.
For, yeah.
And then, and then, and then put that use in the use table.
Because I can come back and say.
Right, yep. We would define.
Yeah, I just, I just haven't defined it, I need, I need to do that research.
So what kind of? I mean, I, 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 I understand like the obvious, uh, business, I think, model that is in mind here, but are you. Hoping to affect change to like, uh, retail establishments as well when it comes to like sex shops? Is that, for example?
Okay, so, um, but a sex shop, a gentleman's club, a strip.
That's right.
Is that considered?
Right, so that, so I mean, is that, but that, would that be considered entertainment because it's technically just a retail store?
Um, we would thought, we could define it as part of that.
Or it could be, it could be, or it could be.
True, true.
No, it's true.
Correct.
Okay.
You can define it as part of that, it could, I mean, because it's gonna have its own definition, so you.
So we could technically put something like that under that grouping, okay?
Definition. Yep.
In order to pull it out, cuz currently, like, I just did a real quick search, which is interesting. But I just looked up a definition.
I love what's been.
Uh.
You're gonna go home, and this is not gonna work well for you.
That's a public computer.
I don't know, that's just one more thing, like.
You know, it's for more purposes.
Cause it's all on the one computer.
You guys stop, you're making a blend.
But it's, uh, it's. Um, it, the, you know, the general definition for adult entertainment is more about the entertainment side. Uh, so we would have to put something in there specific to, you know, retail as well, uh, like, you know, including. And we do that in some of our definitions, including this, 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 this.
Sure.
So that's what we would do in order to have one encompassing, otherwise, you're correct that if, say, someone came in. And wanted a shop rather than, uh, an entertainment facility, then we would look at that as retail, sales.
Right.
And if it's permitted, it's permitted.
Mm-hmm.
So that's why if the, if you don't want that, we would have to add it into the definition.
Expanding the definition.
Exactly.
Could include that, right?
Correct.
Commissioner Wilcox?
Uh, I'm curious how the, uh, outlet mall was, was outside the perimeter.
Uh, because the outlet mall is located within the town center boundary.
Oh, okay.
Good question.
Yeah, very good question. Okay. Good with that?
I'm buying with it.
Okay. Alright. Um. That was my last big one. Okay, Paul, it's your turn. Great discussion, team. Paul, did you have anything?
Um, I think I found what I emailed to Dakota, that it's a lot to go through, if you haven't seen it previously. It was all the way from definitions to misprints to punctuation errors.
So is that a lot for us?
Yes, it's a lot.
I have since gone through and fixed the punctuation and misprint error.
Oh, that's good.
Yeah, right, I thank you for your notes, always, always very well received.
Then if there's not, okay, any, anyone else have anything? Okay. You guys have direction?
I think we, DePada, what do you, what are your thoughts?
I would agree, I've been trying to take diligent notes as well, so I think, uh, we have pretty good direction here.
Okay.
I would agree, very good discussion.
Very good.
Work through the stuff, it is the feedback I was looking for.
We're older, sometimes it takes us a little longer, okay, we get there.
Oh, you're fine.
Alright, um, so we good with that topic? And we're moving on, right?
I'm gonna leave that up to you, to you guys.
Yeah.
This is, this is your work program of kind of what works and what's not working in the development code.
Yeah. We good now? Okay, thank you, good, okay, can still come back with something, yeah. Door's not locked, it's just starting to wind closed.
It is, and what we'll do is we'll come back with the, with all the draft language that we've talked about here this evening to review. Like, before we would head into any sort of public hearing or noticing with this information.
Yeah. So can we, so can we do this early June? Is that what you're thinking? Come back next month with it?
I'll just shut up town, you're out of town, gee.
I will be out of town, the majority of June.
Right.
But I, but I will be here.
Geez.
I have no problem, hope, you know, if you wanna hold, hold a meeting, I'll be here.
What?
What? Well, I might be leaving and so, my term's up, so I might not get back on, I just don't wanna leave anything undone.
That's true.
Yeah.
That's all, okay, I just, you guys want it?
June could be your last month, right?
It could be. You guys are lucky.
No, you'll be back.
Never know.
Have you ever seen me throw myself down on a bed, throw a bed, you might.
Oh, stop sharing my screen, I'm sorry.
Okay. So we're just seeing.
Uh, I have an interview on the twenty-first, so you, for twenty-first, I reapply, so we'll.
We did reapply, okay.
It's all dependent on how well I perform my.
Through TCAB, you mean?
Fingers crossed.
Yeah, a guy called him, okay? It's him.
Did Diane reapply?
Yeah.
Okay. She just, she had not replied.
These guys all ran into each other at City Hall.
Yeah.
Okay, it was like a mad rush at four forty-five.
Got it done.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, you can.
So if we have a meeting in June, what would you like to talk about in the development code, the next chapter, the? I'm just, I'm just trying, trying to maybe prepare.
I would probably say try to nail some of this down, right?
Right.
Oh, of what we talked about tonight?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
If we did that, but when does he leave or is he already mentally gone?
Uh, I will, my last day for June, I will be gone, I say my last day, I'm not going anywhere, I'm coming back. Uh, I will be out, uh. I will be out, my last, the 5th through the 20, through the 21st. Yeah. So I will be gone for that time, and then I will be back the 24th. Hit the ground running with a lot of emails.
Oh man, I took one week off and I have 300 emails.
I know.
Exactly.
Email anxiety, it's real.
Okay, I guess we go to staff.
Yes, staff comments this evening. I do have a couple of updates for all of you. Commissioner Wilcox asked, he sent me an email and asked me about the activity that's happening at the general store downtown. And I just want to let people know that a tenant is moving in. They're a commercial retail popcorn business, and they do a lot of popcorn fundraisers in, in around the region. So they're gonna be making popcorn in there, packaging it up for their fundraiser, but also selling it on-site. And I think they may be doing some other things as well, ice cream, so.
They just are installing that right now?
Yep.
You know them.
I know them?
Rip City up. The Corbett thing.
Yeah.
Do all of that, yeah.
Is this going into like the full, like remainder of the building, going downstairs or upstairs?
They took the whole building.
They took the whole building, nice.
Cool, great people.
The city of Traddell, we are hosting a community walk. I just want to put this out there, on Wednesday, May 22nd at 5:30 PM at Mayor's Square. And it's about a mile to a mile and a half walk. And folks will be, you know, stopping and learning about different like historic places in downtown. And the city, we received a $60,000 Oregon Fire Marshal grant. And it's a three-year grant, and we're kicking off this work this June within the community, so we are holding, we're focusing on three neighborhoods with, for the three-year period. And the first neighborhood that we're focusing on is the Sandy Palisades neighborhood. And we are going to be hosting a Neighborhood Social on June 18th, which is the Tuesday at 6:30 PM in the Sandy Palisades Park, where people can come learn about defensible spaces and how they can reduce wildfire risk on their, on their property. And then later in the week, starting on Friday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, we'll have available dumpsters throughout that subdivision for people to put their yard debris in. So it's a free yard debris event that weekend in June for the Sandy Palisades neighborhood. And we're gonna be sending out postcards to everyone that, that lives in that subdivision.
Is that Father's Day weekend?
Every father likes to do yard work.
No, that's when the fathers send their children.
No, Father's Day is the, is the weekend before.
Oh, good, because they have their all neighborhood garage sale that Father's Day weekend, so.
You had a really sweat in there for a second.
So you can't get in that neighborhood, right, in this, yeah.
Yeah, okay. And then, of course, June 7th is our first, I shouldn't say it's not our first, but it's first Friday. And we'll be, the city will have, will be hosting a table at that event. And I know that the Community Advisory Committee, I think we're gonna get some volunteers from that committee to help engage with the community on some questions that, you know, they might want to ask. What's working, what's not working, how do people engage with the community, those types of questions. So that'll be nice for them to get out there. And then our next meeting then will be on June, I don't have my calendar.
22nd? June 12th?
June 12th, yep.
Close.
22nd, the day you come back.
That's a Saturday.
He wants this done before he comes back.
Oh, no, we're just, we're just getting going, then like, then the real plot starts.
That's it, unless any of you commissioners have any questions?
The only real, uh, ta, uh, update I have is that we do have, we just got a conditional use application in for car dealership.
That's right.
Uh, that just, it was just input today. So that is going to go down off of Stark Street in the vacant RV dealership space.
Oh, thank God.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
So they
I live near there.
Uh, they came in, it's, it's, you know, another dealer, dealership that's gonna be filling in that space. They're leasing it from the owner of the space next door, which is Alan Webb, so. Uh, the reason, just a little background, the reason why they have to go through a conditional use is because it has been vacant for over a year. So once, even though it's, it's clearly designed and built for dealership, it is conditional, conditionally permitted within the code. And so they have to go through the process since it's been vacant. So that'll be coming in June. I've been working with them, but either Nick or Erica will be bringing that to you all for, in the Planning Commission meeting in June. And that's, that's the main one. I always think about applications. I'm glad you, you covered that, I always think applications, I'm glad you covered the other big stuff.
Great, thank you.
Nothing, although I'm always impressed by Paul's spell check and grammar check abilities. Wouldn't mind passing my, my work through him.
Can we do that, Paul?
Sure.
Alright, Commissioner Wilcox?
Yeah, I actually had a question, speaking of conditional. I was curious about the department fee schedules. I know the variance we had at the last meeting required an $800 application fee. Is that the same for a conditional?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, that answers my question, thank you.
You're welcome.
We get paid so much, it's worth 800 to come here. Commissioner Edwards? Commissioner Newman?
In November, are we voting on marijuana?
Uh, yes.
So that does come up?
Yeah.
Yeah, because the people, Khalifa is still leasing that space next to Baylene Center, so I don't know if they're
Oh, they are.
Yeah. According to Payling, they're still, I don't know if they have, they think they're gonna hold on, if it passes, then they'll appeal the Luba deal or what, anyway.
They would have to reapply.
Right.
Right, because they only have 21 days aft, well, they would have to, they would have had to appeal to City Council, and I was sorry, I was not here when
They did.
So they appealed to City Council?
And then after City Council's
And then they went to Luba, and it was upheld?
That's it.
Right, yeah, so, yeah, I don't know what their ideas are, but
Yeah, so they kind of have to start over.
I want to thank the code enforcement officer for keeping up on the vehicles that get left behind in our neighborhood. We've had a few that had either expired tags or no license plates at all. He did a great job, I want to thank him personally, and I want everyone to vote. It's important to vote. Your vote will count. Even if you don't think it does, it does.
Did you have a comment, Mr. Kestner?
Actually, just a comment and a question. One, just thing that briefly came to mind on the, on the Khalifa discussion. As, as far as I know, OLCC has put an indefinite hold on any new marijuana licenses because the, the whole state is completely lashing in retail marijuana. So I mean, to a certain extent, the, the question in November is moot. But the other, the other question that I had is more around the, kind of the larger planning process, and, and this is just putting a bug in everybody's ear, is as the changes to uses and definitions start to coalesce, if there would be any interest within the Planning Commission to possibly look to the, look to the CAC for, for input and comment. As, that's one of the things that, that we've kind of been talking about as part of that. That committee is trying to, is trying to highlight to the, to the citizenry writ large a lot of these things much, much earlier in the planning process than when things usually get advertised for applications and open hearings and such. If that makes any sense.
Yeah, and we, we could certainly look at that, that's not typical protocol because this was initiated here. But we could certainly discuss doing something along those lines. And I, I would agree with you on the marijuana thing. It's, it's muted this time because of the moratorium, but the vote would be in place and the moratorium could be lifted at any point. And so the result of the vote would be, what would dictate that at that time. But you're right, that, and the moratorium may get lifted next week or not lifted at all, you don't know.
Yeah, given market conditions and the way things have been going the last couple of years, I highly doubt it's going anywhere anytime soon.
I would agree, stranger things have happened down there. Alright, with that, I just want to thank everybody for their time and thank you for a great discussion this evening. This is hard work, but we got a lot of good stuff done. And with that, entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move that, we adjourn?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adjourn the Planning Commission meeting for May 8th. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, any opposed? No, we are adjourned, thank you all, we'll see you on the 12th of June.